Thank you again for finding us on No Stop Lights. Want to thank our sponsors. I'm thanking them all the time with product placement. Once again, this is not clutter, but rather product placement. Our sponsors, Francis Marion University, Carolina Bank, Mickey Fens, Victors, Marlboro, Pitty Electric Co-op, McCall Farms, Pepsi Florence, PLC, Commercial Real Estate, and McLeod Health. Without the sponsorship and support of those folks who are trying to help me build somewhat of a media outlet in a community that has seen kind of a mass exodus of media, not beating up on what's here, but there was a day that we had a lot of local coverage and a lot of local content. And people in the community knew what was happening in the body politic and around town and whatnot. And we've seen that. And a lot of things have happened. I mean, we're on the internet. The internet has obviously been a game changer, but I'm trying to build a podcast that will hyper-serve a local community that I think deserves the coverage required. I don't want to say hold political people accountable, but at least let you know what their priorities are and what they're doing. We've had a run recently of homegrown businesses that we celebrated. You folks have been very kind to increase our subscribers and our listenership, and we certainly do appreciate that. And without our sponsors, none of this would be possible. We'll thank them again at the end. I'm always looking for unique personalities and the people that I think you would find their stories somewhat interesting. George J. Bailey is a, I call him the OG of downtown Florence. George has been one of the true and original believers that a city center is critical if we're going to advance the community. George and I have established a pretty decent friendship over the years. We may not see everything the same way, but we certainly have a certain love for our community and a desire to see our community do well. So I want to welcome George J. Bailey to No Stop Lights. How are you, sir?
I am well. Thank you, Ken. And it's, I do consider us friends.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And I've also consider us kindred spirits in our passion for the community.
Very, very well said. Okay, let's before, and I want to get a lot of issues with you because you're an interesting person that has a lot of knowledge about what has happened around town over the years. Where did George J. Bailey and the J. Bailey crowd come from? You've got brothers running around town in prominent influential positions, but where did your clan come from and how did you end up in Florence?
Well, that's a great question, and I'll tell you, we are transplants from New York. Our dad was in the garment industry. So you have to go back to 1960s, late, the 1950s and 1960s, South Carolina. And the 1950s and 1960s, South Carolina does, today doesn't resemble what it was then. We were a textile, heavy farming, heavy community, as your family was heavily involved in that industry as well. Well, the garment industry, it was cut and sew factories. They made dresses. Well, now they're all made overseas, but they always were, are in search of cheap labor. Well, in the 1950s and 1960s, the cheap labor was in the South. And Wentworth Manufacturing Company had two plants. There was one in Florence and there was another one in Lake City. And we lived in New York and my father worked for Wentworth Manufacturing Company as a designer of women's dresses and a pattern maker. Now, my dad had a ninth grade education, but he was an incredibly creative person, very detail oriented and highly skilled in what he did. And his skill set took him to the top of the chain where he was working on Madison Avenue in, in New York City. For this company. Well, they were having production problems down here in South Carolina. So in early 1961, the owner of the company, Ronald Sopkin, and the Sopkin family was a huge part of this community at one time. Ronald, Al Sopkin, Ronald's father up in New York, said, Johnny, listen, my dad's John. Johnny, would you mind going down to the Florence plant and the Lake City plant and helping them out for a couple of weeks? Well, interesting, at that time, Eastern Airlines was the airlines that was in Florence. They didn't have a Myrtle Beach Airport. It was Florence Airport. And Eastern Airlines flew from New York to Washington and Washington to Florence. Those were the, the flights of that. And so if you wanted to get to Florence, it was easy. You get on Eastern Airlines before Piedmont, before US Airways, before American, you got on Eastern and Florence was the airport hub at that time. So my dad got on the plane and flew down here, spent a couple of weeks, flew back. And that went back and forth and back and forth where instead of a couple of weeks, it was three weeks or it was a month. And eventually, two years later, in 1963, he said, they were asked, would you and your wife and family consider relocating down here because you've been doing great? We really need you. You've been making a huge difference in the local factories that we have. And so he brought my mama down and showed her around.
What did she think?
Well, that's an interesting thing because in
Because New York and the South aren't, I mean, that had to be somewhat of a culture shock.
Huge culture shock.
Sure, sure.
I mean, my mother, of course, my dad was the youngest of 14 kids. And we're an immigrant family. He was the only one born in the United States. All the rest were born in what was then Syria. It was, remember, he was born in 1914, which is before World War I, right? So the climate that the family came over in 1910, again, before World War I. And so the family that came over, he was the only one of 14 brothers and sisters, he was the only one born in the United States.
And all the others were born in Syria?
All the others were born in Syria, what, coming from Lebanon.
Sure, I got
Lebanese, but, but it was all part of the Ottoman Empire at that time. It wasn't, there wasn't a country of Syria or a country of Iraq.
The Ottomans ran everything.
It was Turkey, out of Turkey, they ran it, but it was the Ottoman Empire. And so that's where the family came over. Of course, we're Christian Catholic, Maronite Catholic, and so came over. And you did have some significant differences with a government that was an Islamic government. And so, oops, let me turn that off.
George, so there were more of your kind in New York?
Yes, well, a lot of family.
The South had not embraced, I mean, at that period of time, I mean, it was southerners or nothing down here. So let's go back to your mom. Your dad has a task. He's focused on, you know, turning these factories around or solving some of the problems. My mom's in New York. He proposes to her this opportunity. She comes down and thinks what?
She comes down and thinks two things. Number one, it's a huge shock because the grocery stores was an A and P. You know, that's what was down here at the time. And, you know, being Lebanese, we cook with olive oil and garlic and all of those things that today we take, all take for granted. There was no garlic.
Lord, lord.
I mean, so there was no, there was no olive oil. So we had to have family members bring it. But, so that was one of the things, it was, but she loved the downtown because that's where, there were no malls at that time. So she loved the downtown and the quaintness. And the main thing that my mama talked about was the friendliness of the people. How friendly everybody
Southern hospitality.
Southern hospitality. Now, there was already a fairly significant Lebanese community here in Florence. You had the Knofel family was here. You had the Baroudi family was here. You had the Atiyah family was here. So there's a, there was already a vibrant Lebanese community who they quickly connected up with. And my father had connected up with them, as well as the Greek community and the Jewish community. So we connected up with those, my mom and dad did. And she came down and said, well, if this is what we need to do as a family, that's what we're going to do. And my mother was the most amazing, positive outlook person. If she put her mind to something and said, this is what we're going to do, then that's what we did. And all the rest of us just followed suit.
So your mom and dad, bring how many kids with them?
That's a great question because my brother Ron at the time was in college at St. John's University, because there's 15 years between he and I.
Wow.
So he was finishing up his college degree at St. John's. My brother Jerry was in, who's a doctor here now. He was in high school up there at Brooklyn Prep, which was a Jesuit high school. So the two of them stayed up there, but my brothers Joe and John and I moved down here and finished up elementary, middle school, and then high school down here, going on to Carolina, my brother Joe and I. And then John went to Francis Marion.
I gotta ask you this. So the brothers have all blazed their own trail, but in very different sorts of ways. Was that intentional? Was that encouraged by your parents? You're a lawyer, you're a doctor, a business guy, an entrepreneur. I mean, walk me through how brothers end up so close to one another? Because I understand your family is very, very close. But so unique in what they do?
Absolutely, it's attributable to our mom and dad. No question whatsoever. They looked for and identified the strengths in each one of us. And never, I mean, while, listen, you've got five boys, you're always going to be competitive. There's no question about that. But they didn't, you know, egg on a competitiveness. They egged on love for each other, respectfulness of each other, and appreciation of the skill set of each other and what the strengths of each other are. For instance, you know, my brother Ron is brilliant. He, I mean, we tease him by saying that Latin should have been his first language, that he's, he just knows everything about everything and he's a brilliant person. Jerry, so compassionate as a doctor. And my brother Joe has, he can do anything with his hands. So my mom and dad, when they were, they saw in Joe, when he was a kid, when he got a toy, for instance, a toy car, the first thing he wanted to do was tear it apart because he wanted to see how it worked. And he would tear it apart and put it back together and tear it apart and put it back together. Well, they recognized that. He had this unique skill set, different from me. I mean, I just wanted to, I just wanted to play with the cars, you know? But he just, it was like, you had to wind up and how did the motor work and how does it push the car? And so he would, it was fascinating to him. So they encouraged him. When he was in high school, they went out to the junkyard and bought a clunker of a, what then, today is a classic car, like a 56 Pontiac or something.
Probably a million dollars now.
Yeah, it's probably so. But they, they went and bought a clunker of a car and they said, hey, you want to drive a car? Fix it up. And they just had the car dropped off. Well, of course, he made a hot rod out of it, you know, the rolled and leather pleated seats and, you know, had the fancy paint job and put the, everything you're supposed to do to have in the 1960s, right? Everybody had, early 70s, everybody had the hot rod muscle cars. And so that's what he did. And that was really the beginning of him today to have American Luxury Coach where he does all of the truck conversions and everything. But it's basically the roots started when my mom and dad encouraged that in him way, way, way back in the day.
Not try to make him be something that would have been more difficult, but rather let his true talent shine.
And every, and they recognized the uniqueness of everybody. I mean, they helped my brother John when he got started in the real estate business. Of course, my brother Ron had already started the law firm, so that was easy for me to come right into. And Jerry, so all five of us are still here in Florence.
And remain very close.
And remain very close. And our children are, are all, the cousins, they're all super close as well. So it's one of the things I take great pride in, but absolutely all of us attribute it to our mom and dad.
So you guys blaze your own trail. You chart your own course. You're a lawyer. Your brother's doing all these other cool and, and exciting things. I think I'm correct when I say you're the only one that chose to become political. I mean, I would imagine your brothers have strong political views. Your parents probably have strong political views. But, but you were the one that said, okay, not only do I have strong political views, I'm going to get into fray. I'm going to get in the arena and, and run for office.
I'm the only one that's been elected to an office. Early on, my brother John ran for city council one time back, he was in his twenties.
That would have been a long time ago.
That would have been a long
Because I think I vaguely remember
Yeah, so he ran for, for city council back in the day. But we as a family have always had a keen interest in the community in varying degrees. My mom and dad were hugely involved with the Florence Hall Theater, so much so that last week at the awards night, they got recognized for a new award, a lifetime achievement, which posthumously given to like four different individuals. And they were one of the award recipients of this brand new lifetime achievement award. The costume room at the Little Theater is named for them. So their contributions there and in varying other parts of the community. So I get it honestly, you know, having grown up with that, seeing them as examples in my life and seeing the involvement that, you know, my brothers have had in various different community aspects. So it was only natural for me to get involved. But my move into politics itself and, you know, getting elected to office and serving in office took a different path.
You filed for office the first time when?
The very first time I filed was in 2012. And that was when they had the electronic filing snafu, the ethics you had to file. It was not clear. And 300 people who had applied for, who had already filed for office got told that we could not run for office because it was not done correctly. So even though I was running unopposed at the time or as a, in the Democratic primary, I got bounced from it. But then I ran in 2014, got elected and then
But George, you've been on a lot of boards and committees and had a lot of interest in downtown. So you're, you're living that life and here's where I don't have, here's where I get lost.
Okay.
So you're, you're on the outside kind of sort of looking in and you're influencing the political people that you need to influence to drive the community in a positive direction as you see it. That's the good gig. I mean, that, that's the sweet job to not put your name on a ballot, to not run for office, but rather try to influence indirectly. I mean, the negativity and the hostility and the spinning, I mean, that, why did you choose to say, okay, instead of being on the periphery and advocating and lobbying and, and trying to consult to get things done, I'm going to put my name on a ballot? I mean, you knew what you were exposing yourself to, am I right? George, I've always said, when I decided to run for office, I mean, I was on the outside looking and I cared deeply, but, but I was a part of the solution over here. I became a part of the problem once I got elected. Why did you choose, why did you have a burning desire to be a part of the problem, George?
Well, that's an interesting way to phrase it, Ken.
But you can relate.
I can relate that some people see it that way. Fixing potholes and addressing some of those things. I would like to think I'm part of the solution and part of a problem solving. But my involvement got started in a very strong way in 1995 when Frank Willis got elected as mayor. And so I was this young kid, I mean, I had 20 something years old, moved back here to Florence and after getting my law degree and started practicing law at the J. Bailey Law Firm. And he ran for mayor and he ran on a platform that said, for us to move forward in economic development for Florence and the PD, we have to do something about downtown. Well, J. Bailey Law Firm is located right downtown.
You got a dog in that fight.
I got a dog in that fight. And I saw that firsthand. Listen, when I was in high school and graduated in 1974 from West Florence High School, when I was in high school, downtown was huge. It was vibrant. There was, I mean, you had the Florence Mall, but still downtown was the place to be. And then when I, you go from 74, then you move, go up to 84, in that 10-year time, downtown had taken a huge downturn. Now, there were efforts that were being made and I don't want to, you know, dismiss any of the efforts made by anybody else because a lot of efforts were being made, but the downward trend was still happening. And Frank had the top of his agenda downtown. Well, that resonated with me. And so I called him up, you know, here was this punk kid, I didn't know any better. I said, you know, if you're serious about that and you want some help, let me know. So he said, yeah. So we met and literally it started with a room like this with five of us sitting around a table saying, all right, what are we going to do about downtown? And I was the young kid at the table and didn't know any better and thought, well, maybe I can make a difference. And so Frank put me to work, starting with the formation of the Florence 2010 Committee because this was in 1999, saying, what do we want Florence to look like by the year 2010? So we had a visioning process. Tom Marshall was the chair of the, the president of the chamber at that time. So Tom was very actively involved and he and Frank and I got together and we got a little bit of funds from the city and the county to fund a study. We got Howard Landers out of Charlotte to come down, HDR Consulting, and they came down and did a conceptual master plan. So saying, here's what it kind of could look like. Here's some of the things we could do. And then we had town hall meetings. So got with the press and we went over to Pointer and we held these town hall meetings. Didn't know if you're going to get 10 people or 100 people, didn't have, well, the place was overloaded. It was just flowing with interest, saying, yes, by God, thank you. We desperately need something to happen downtown. Well, that was what we were looking for. Were we going to be, you know, swimming upstream and no one cared or is it something people cared about? Well, it was very obvious that people cared. So we had a series of those presenting the conceptual master plan and then took that conceptual master plan with the input from the community, then formed the 2010 Committee, evolved into the Florence Downtown Development Corporation, which is still ongoing and vibrant and award-winning today. We just, they just won the Main Street Award, a national Main Street Award for the Florence Downtown Development Corporation. And I'm proud to say that I was one of the founders of it and I was the founding chair of it for the first eight years that it was in existence.
George, did, did the conceptual plan come to fruition? How many times did we bob and weave? How many times did we deviate from the, from the concept? Nothing ever goes exactly as planned. You know that and I know that. But how close are we today to what was envisioned when you began on this journey?
It's remarkable how close we are. It really is remarkable. Not necessarily everything placed exactly where we thought it would be, but the key pieces were, we needed to have, and, and here was the model that was presented, which I have to, I use analogies. As a lawyer, when I go into a courtroom, I need an analogy that I can make sense of. Well, the analogy that was presented to me about downtown is, think about a mall. If you have a mall, you've got anchors. You got, you know, Belk at one end, you got a Penny's at the other end, you know, Best Buy or whatever at the other end. And then you have anchors placed throughout and then you have infill, okay? The smaller ones infill between the anchors. If you take that concept, then you have a pedestrian walkway that, that occurs where people can walk up and down. Okay, that's a great model. How do we take that? Well, if you take that and you plunk it down along Urbey and Dargon Street with the library being the anchor at one end and the Judicial Center being the anchor at the other end. And then you said, okay, what other anchors do we need? Well, let's, the Florence Hall Theater was out at Casua at that time. Now, I remember Little Theater when it was still out at the airport back in the early 1960s. And then it went to Casua and then it came downtown. But it was out there and I was the former president of the Little Theater Board of Directors and we were looking to do some fundraising because the building, the Casua building was needing significant upgrades. Well, Jimmy Rainwater at the time, God rest his soul, was a passionate believer in the downtown redevelopment. You know, the Rainwater family. So Jimmy and I talked and he became the president after I rotated off of the board. And so Jimmy rallied the Florence Hall Theater to say, listen, downtown is a place to go. So getting a theater downtown, getting a performing arts center downtown, getting a museum downtown. If you think about it, they're all along Dargon Street, they face Dargon Street. You would think naturally they would be on Urbey, but Urbey is the vehicular corridor. It's not your pedestrian corridor. We did it purposefully, according to the conceptual master plan that had Dargon be the pedestrian corridor, which is why the library faces Dargon Street.
Well, George, see, when I was on county council, the good old boys on the bottom end of the county, as we like to refer to ourselves as, we thought we turned the damn building around backwards, you know what I mean? And then along comes Performing Arts Center and the museum. But it was always the intent to focus things toward Dargon Street to create this walking sort of district.
And then, and looking at McLennigan as rehab and now that you have that now, of course, that faces. So now you have McLennigan and the library facing each other in a vibrant, to the south part of the inner corridor. So you have the inner part of it and then you have the outer part of it. And then so many different levels of involvement. And, you know, you can have a great plan. You can have great ideas and you can have everything laid out, but if you want to make it happen, you got to have fuel. You got a train, you got a track that you got, and that train is going to go down the track. But if you want that train to go, you got to have some fuel for that engine. Well, there comes the Dr. Bruce Lee Foundation. And of course, Senator Leatherman at the time getting, so the funding between the Dr. Bruce Lee Foundation, the city and the county and the state coming together accelerated the plan. Again, the pieces didn't go exactly where, but we all knew that in order for it to be successful, these key public entities had to happen. The private ones would follow, but the public has to lead. You got to lead with the public dollars. And then the private says, well, I got a performing arts center as my neighbor.
I mean, we think we can make a return on the investing of dollars. I mean, that's what capital does. Capital chases return. And, and once the private sector believed, okay, the public has got us here, I think we can go down there and sustain a business. And that was always the belief that business people like myself had. I want to ask you this. I'm jumping around a bit, but did you ever envision that Francis Marion would have the presence downtown that they do? How did that come about? Because that's something that surprised me.
Well, I'll tell you the conversation I had. Before Dr. Carter was president, there was not much interest from Francis Marion to be a part of downtown.
They were content where they were.
They were very content where they were. And there was a group of people, Beverly Hazelwood and Starr Ward and others, who had a passion for a performing arts center. And it was a private group. And they had raised some money and they were trying to rally the community to have a performing arts center. Well, the Dr. Bruce Lee Foundation gave money to Little Theater because Little Theater just celebrating their 100th anniversary at that time had an 80th, 80 years of stability as an entity. And so the Dr. Bruce Lee Foundation gave $10 million to Little Theater to build a new Florence Hall Theater. And that's why the theater came under Jimmy Rainwater's, you know, encouragement. That's why they came downtown. But they turned, the foundation turned the keys over to Little Theater and Little Theater has run it. They, they have not asked for the foundation to give them any funding for sustainability to, for operations. Foundation doesn't want to support operations. They'll, they'd like to support capital improvements. So the same thing was holding true with this notion of a performing arts center. Who is going to run it? Who would take ownership and maintain it? Because the foundation said, you know, we can help fund it perhaps, but we're not, we don't want to be committed where we have to fund it, the operations of it, year after year after year. Fast forward, Dr. Carter comes on board and at that time, Mayor Willis had a breakfast that he hosted. And at the breakfast, it was kind of like a business leader's breakfast gathering and issues were discussed and concepts were brought out. Well, I had had this conversation with Frank and, and we were talking about the performing arts center because again, I was the chair of the Downtown Development Corporation at that time. And I said, Frank, what do you think about me approaching Dr. Carter and see if maybe Francis Marion might have an interest? He's a new president. I don't really know him well, but he seems like the kind of person who would be open to that. Frank said, sure, if you want to ask him, that's fine. So, you know, again, being a young kid, not knowing any better, I approached, I said, Dr. Carter, I said, you know, there's been this conversation about a performing arts center, which if you've seen our conceptual plan, which calls for a performing arts center downtown, if we could get funding to fully fund the construction of a performing arts center and we were to get the keys to that and turn it over, would you take the keys and run it? He said, you build it, I'll run it. Well, that's all we needed to hear. And so that's what triggered that. His saying, if you can get the funding to build it and you can get that done and you can make that deal happen, acquire, because there was the old Holiday Inn downtown there. I mean, that property still wasn't, wasn't even available.
Once again, facing Dargon.
Once again, facing Dargon. But it was, so people, you know, people saw the map and they saw a building, a performing arts center plunked on top of, there was a bank that used to be on Cheva Street, you know? So there, there was, I said, well, wait a minute, are you showing this on top of something? Well, yeah, that's just temporary. You know, they're not going to be there forever. And so it showed that. And when Dr. Carter saw that and he of course saw the library was already in place and some of these other things were in the works, I think that's all he needed to know. And of course, he has such a close relationship with the Bruce Lee people. And of course he has such a close relationship with the Bruce Lee people himself, that the rest, as they say, is history.
George, you, you have been, I mean, you could argue, and I mean this sincerely, I mean it complimentary, you, you have probably had more to do with getting downtown to where it is. And I think we're all excited and proud about what's happened downtown. What do you worry about? You've, you've told kind of a celebratory story of, of what it was. And I, I remember coming down here when it was a happening place and I remember for
You remember when it went down the toilet.
Yeah, for a decade and a half, you were afraid to come down here. I mean, there's graffiti everywhere and windows boarded up and, and pigeons, you know, just anyway, it's a podcast, but I want to be, I don't want to be disrespectful. Pigeon feces.
Yes.
Everywhere.
And dead pigeons.
There you go. But, but what, what's the next step? What was the next layer of success? We're not finished. We can't be finished. We're never finished, correct?
My biggest concern is complacency.
Okay. And, and we met with Knox White when we decided to do a project downtown and Knox, I mean, it was so interesting his answer. We sat in and said, Knox, when did you realize you were finished?
You're talking about the mayor of Greenville.
Of Greenville, I mean, one of the most iconic downtowns in the South, to be honest with you.
Whom we modeled ourself after, got Don Hunter from Hunter Interests to be our consultant to work with us on phase one, phase two, and phase three of the actual implementation plan. And Don was the one that worked with Greenville in their inception, in the very, very beginning of their downtown redevelopment. So we stole their consultant from them who had helped them and very proudly said, listen, you guys are doing great. We're going to borrow your model. So yes, Florence is modeled to a great extent off of the success from Greenville.
So, and Greenville has never stopped succeeding.
Right.
I mean, it's a, it's a 500,000 populated county. It's got the, next door is the BMW North America. I mean, I, you know, Michelin, North American, I mean, there, there's some things there that we don't have here, but they've never gotten.
They have the Reedy River too.
Yeah, you're right. That doesn't hurt, but they, but they've never gotten complacent. They've always felt the need, a burning desire to do better and better and better and better.
You have to have that.
Okay. Let's, let's say we've got to have that. What should our focus be in this next 10 or 15 years of downtown development?
When, when you think about downtown development and you think about the importance of it, its greatest value is adding to the quality of life. Because it's, it gives a sense of place. Every community has to have a sense of place. The beach has the beach. There's the place, you know? You've got the ocean, you've got the sand, there's the place. Greenville has the Reedy River. There's a sense of place right along the Reedy River. We have to have a sense of place. We don't have a beach, we don't have a river, but we have a downtown. We have historic downtown. The beach does not have a historic downtown. They wish they had it. We've got it. So we have to, number one, try to make sure that we maintain the buildings that we have, bring them back. Cause there's still a number of buildings that have not yet been brought back. Some of them are on the verge of beginning to get brought back. But then let's add to the inventory and that's what's starting to happen. And then expand the footprint. People think about downtown as just Dargon and Evans. You think about downtown Florence, well, that's Dargon and Evans. People don't realize that when we created the official downtown, it's 60 square blocks, 60 blocks. It goes from Urbey and Cherokee all the way to Urbey and Lucas Street. It goes from church to Koker Street down Cheva's. It is a huge downtown and it's one of the largest downtowns in the Southeast in terms of the, the number of blocks. And you, but the core of it, the inner core of it, the historic downtown, yes, is those few blocks. The challenge is to take it and expand it, which we're seeing now with expanding down West Evans. We need to expand, as you've seen with Hope Health along Dargon Street. Now we're going up north Dargon with the work that's being done at Hope Health and the grocery store that's there and some of the work that's happening on the north end heading that way. And then further to the South, that's more residential from, you get from the library down to Cherokee, there's office, but I, we saw in the initial conceptual plan that the South part of Dargon Street between the library and Cherokee would be residential. And I think there's some efforts being made down there to see that come to pass. It's, it's ripe for residential. And so you want people to live, work and play downtown. That's the goal.
Well, and George, the one thing, and I'm a convert, I'm a tree hugging conservative now. I say that tongue in cheek, but the one thing that I think Florence has to address, and I'm going to get your take on this, I guess this constructive criticism, it doesn't show well. It's not aesthetically pleasing. We don't have green space. We don't have walkways.
It's better than it used to be.
It is, it's much better.
But it's not where it needs to be.
But we've got a hundred miles to go in regards to aesthetics. What can we do to urge along the belief that we've got to have more dedicated green space? We've got to be more aesthetically pleasing, got to be a prettier community than it currently is.
Gateways and nodes are key. So if you're two blocks off of the driving path, people don't see that. But if you're along Urbey Street, everybody sees it. It's US Highway 52. Okay? If you're on Palmetto Street, everybody sees it. That's the way to the beach. If you're on Cheva Street, everybody sees it because that's a hospital. And let's take a second and say, what has McLeod done? They have beautified that path there. They have beautified Cheva's Street.
Cause it looked like hell before.
It looked like hell before, but now it's beautiful. And they've actually gotten DOT to agree to put a pedestrian stop where you have the lights flashing and you have to come to a stop to let people cross Cheva's Street. That was a huge achievement on their part to get DOT to agree with that. So putting some of those things in place and using Cheva's Street to say, okay, here's an example, right in Florence, of how they have made it aesthetically pleasing. Now, obviously McLeod has resources that not everybody else has, but we can maximize through grant money and through pooling of resources and partnership. And let's look at, in what in my opinion, well, let me back up one second. So people forget, they see Hope Health now and they see that, you know, great welcome to downtown, right there at the corner of Lucas and Urbey. And they think, oh, well, that's great. People forget what used to be there. Do you remember what used to be there? The junkyard.
It looked like hell.
The very first thing you saw, welcome to downtown, you turned onto Urbey Street, there was a junkyard waiting, greeting you.
With a, with a jet airplane.
It had this airplane that was there. That was the welcome to downtown. So the, one of the very first things we had to do when we started the downtown redevelopment process is we had to relocate Bush Recycle Center. And it took a couple of years and I, I worked with George Bush and with John McKinnis at that time, both of whom have no longer with him, may he rest in peace. But we found some property further out, Urbey Street, North Urbey, relocated them. Dr. Bruce and Lee Foundation were huge help in the acquisition of that property, donated it to the city. Why? Because of the contamination. The city then had to turn around and get Brownsfield money, took three foot of dirt out of the entire acreage. All of that site, they had to take three foot of dirt out and put new dirt in. No one, no private entity, no entity could have afforded to do that. We had to get federal money. So yeah, it's a really involved process, but the transformation aesthetically, now you have Hope Health there. What a transformation that is. So that was the welcome to downtown. My focus, and I think what I've gotten fellow council members to look at is we now need to look at the corridor of East Palmetto Street from the airport into town. I've had many conversations with Dr. Carter. He is beside himself. Cause he, listen, he has to sell Francis Marion and the, he needs, and McLeod has to sell that district. And now that you have MUSC, the Behavioral Health Building right there on Dargon Street, so many entities have to sell that corridor coming in from the airport. Well, if it looks, if it always looks like it always is right now, we're going to have a problem with that. So we need, as a community, all the partners need to come together and say, what can we do?
Okay, let's do this, let's, you and I agree today.
All right.
And I'll make a commitment to you and I want you to make one to me. The, the only thing I've done a pretty decent job of in my life is maintaining relationships and cultivating and trusting and, and leaning on and being leaned upon. What if we agree today that whether you're Republican or a Democrat, whether you're a member of our delegation in Columbia, whether you're a city council member, a county council member, a mayor running for mayor, a business owner, McLeod, all these prominent businesses that I've got listed here that are so kind of my efforts here on no stoplights. What if we agree to do something similar in aesthetics and green space that you guys did to downtown? What if we take an all encompassing in the city, outside, I know you're a city council member, that's your prime interest. I get that, I respect that. But, but certainly you would agree, some of the county outside of the city has to be a part of this. So, so what if we agree today to try and formulate a, a plan that may take 10 or 15 years to come to fruition, but we try to lean on our delegation to secure funding to bring back Francis Marion, McLeod, all these other healthcare providers? It, it seems to me as organized as we were and successful as we've been in downtown, we're a bit sporadic.
Yes.
We're a little, oh, let's do this over here and this. Is it time for us to come together as a community and county, local and state government, Francis Marion involved, McLeod involved and say, okay, here's what we want Florence to look like 15, 20 years from now, and here's how we get there?
It's absolutely pertinent, needed and critical.
Now.
Now to our success in the future. You have to plan your work and work your plan. That's the way it goes. And that's what we did, starting back in the day, when we first started the whole process, we developed the conceptual plan, then we developed the implementation plan and the strategy to do that. And it was a multifaceted strategy to do it. What partners do we need? All of that was laid out in the planning process. And so having the city and the county and the state working together on this critical, how aesthetically do we develop ourselves? Because you've got people, we call them these donut holes. Because you got, if you go down Lucas Street, for instance, we're, the city is starting to do Lucas Street through my committee. I'm the chair of the Business Development Committee and one of, and Lethonia Peaches Barnes is on that committee with me, along with Brian Braddock. And so the three of us have been working very hard on taking these corridors, the very thing you're talking about, take, how do the three of us bring entities together to do this? And I'm very proud of the two of them and that they've, you know, come so hard to say, and with their ideas and their input on looking at it. And one of the corridors that is being looked at very closely, that city has now just started the process on, in fact, we have a meeting coming up, our next committee meeting, we're going to have the consultants come in and talk to us, is the Lucas Street corridor. But we're working already on the Palmetto Street card, the East Palmetto card. And you look at I-20 coming in, the I-20 corridor coming in, you know, I think it's one of the better corridors that you're coming into now. And if you're coming off of the interstates and you're heading into Florence, you know, it's nice. You have a lot of greens there, you have trees.
Well lit.
Well lit, you have all of that. So I think that's an example. But if you go down Urbey Street, it ain't so good. And if you go down East Palmetto Street, it's terrible. And you go down Lucas Street, you know, you've got this hodgepodge, some old industry that's there and buildings knocked down, some buildings that are no longer being used. And then you've got some open spaces and there's no sense of place. You've got to have a plan and a sense of place. But we're doing that in East Palmetto and the first example of what you just described is actually happening.
And let's go there.
With Levy Park.
Levy Park. Let's go there.
That's the example of the next step. Now it's just a small piece of it, because it's 20 acres. It's a big park, 20 acre park, but three acres of it is along Palmetto Street.
But we need four or five 20 acre parks.
We need four or five 20 acre parks, but at least this is the first one.
So the first one is what? For those that aren't aware.
Amazing partnerships.
Of what's happening there, you, you guys took quite the eyesore.
Yes.
Of the community and of the process of turning it into a, dare I say, world-class urban park.
Yes, it's, it is underway as we speak. And, and it started with, and again, people who are new to town may not know what we're talking about when we talk about the old motel, but there was old Holiday Inn Motel. That was because 30176, that was the corridor that people traveled. The interstates weren't there. So that's the way people traveled to, going to and from. And all along, you know, you go up through North Carolina, all along 301, and there are these old motels that are no longer being utilized because now everybody's on the interstate. Well, the same thing happened there. You had the downtown, the, the Holiday Inn Motel over there on East Palmetto Street. It was vibrant for a while and then it just deteriorated and then eventually got boarded up. And it decayed. It was a magnet for crime. Not only was it an eyesore, but it was a magnet for crime because all of the rooms, the fronts on the, where you had the doors and the windows and all, those were all removed. And there were these empty caves, if you will, all along both floors where it was just open. And the, the horror of it is all this illicit criminal activity was taking place and there was a fence on the backside of it that separated all that illicit activity from the playground. What community says it's okay to have this illicit criminal activity happening right across the fence from?
Well, we said it was okay for a long time, didn't we?
We did, we did. And, and shame on us that we let it go as long as it did. Now, it, that property was not in the city.
Sure.
It was in the county. So the city felt for many, many years, for decades, felt like there was really very little they could do to do anything about it. An opportunity presented itself with the ARPA money, the American Recovery Plan. The city got funds, COVID funds that came down to reimburse us for employees that were laid off and things of that nature, you know, to keep employees on rather, not to lay them off, to avoid laying off. And so the city council ended up with a million dollars. That was discretionary. Our, our city manager at the time, Randy Ostman, said, listen, here's, this money's going here, that money's going there, but there's a million extra that council can do what, what it wants to do. Well, when I first, you go back to when you ran for office. When I first ran for office, you know, I talked to Ed Robinson when Ed was on, with us and it was on council. And of course, East Florence was Ed's district. And I said to Ed, what do you, what is it? Cause I'm, I'm at large, right? I represent the whole city. So I got to talk to everybody all over the whole city. I said, Ed, what do you see as something that needs to happen? He pointed to that hotel and he said, that needs to come down, that needs to happen. And I made a commitment to him. I said, if I ever have an opportunity and I ever see an opportunity to rally council to do something, I'm going to do it. And I made Ed that promise. Well, fast forward and here this money presents itself, a million dollars. And I said, and I remembered that promise. So I talked again to the Business Development Committee, I talked to Peaches and I talked to others and I said, you know, to Chip and to Quez, and I asked them, what do y'all think about this? And all of council was consulted and everybody seemed to be on board, but there was very little idea on how to make it happen. So I said, I then reached out to McLeod to see what could happen, was McLeod interested? I reached out to the Dr. Bruce and Lee Foundation. Both of them were very, very interested. Talked to the county, at that time Rusty, I talked to Rusty. And so the, the deal was if the city had a million dollars and could put a million dollars in, the county and Bruce and Lee and McLeod would kick in combined another million to match. The Bruce and Lee and McLeod money would go to purchase the property. The property would then be donated to the city to be used as a park. And then the county would help with the remediation, with the tear down cleanup of the property. And of course, you know, it had asbestos and it had, you know, all kinds of other issues that had to get handled. So that was the agreement. And then we went and there was a long story though, which I won't go into bore with all the details, but we eventually got the property onto contract and we had a closing that was set for January the 17th of 2022. And we had a council meeting in January 10 of 22. And the resolution to take that million dollars was presented and it passed six to one, but it passed. And we then got the, the million dollars we needed. And then Bruce and Lee and McLeod agreed to put their part in and they closed on the property and donated it. And so that was the beginning. And so that was the beginning of the purchase and acquisition and cleanup of the property. We then fast forward, now, okay, what happens next? And I took Holly Beaumier from the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And I said, Holly, and again, I was having conversations with Councilwoman Barnes and others and saying, all right, what are we going to do now that we've got it? What are we going to do? And everybody had different ideas on how, matter of fact, some Clint with the city had drawn up a little sketch plan because you had the three acres now that's added to the 17 acres that was already there with Levy Park. And Clint had a little bit of a drawing, we can put this here and that there. And I'm trying to get, as you're talking about, how can we get the whole community involved in this? So I bring Holly out there and ask Holly about it, what she thinks. I said, Holly, you know, you got the Visitor and Convention Bureau over there at the Civic Center. Is that, and that's fine, if that's where the focus is for tourism is simply there, that's fine. But do you also see a potential for extending it to other parts of town? And so I brought her out there and she absolutely said, 100% yes. This is an area that could potentially be ripe because it's right there. That's the only park that's on a major thoroughfare. I mean, other parks are embedded in the communities, but you have Palmetto Street with all that beach traffic every day going back and forth. And Levy Park is the only one that fronts it. So there's an opportunity for tourism. So Holly calls me back a day or so later and says, I got some news for you. And I said, what's that? And she goes, there's a grant, a federal grant that we would not have qualified for, but they just changed the rules this year. And I think we can qualify for it, but we got like a really short timeline. And I said, well, what is it? And it would be for parks. So talked with our city manager again, again, talked with members of, you know, with Peaches and with Braddock and with others and said, what do y'all think about this? And they said, well, if you think we can get it, then go for it. So there was just a small group because we had a very short window of time. We got a, folks that helped do parks up in Greenville and at the beach, they were based out of Raleigh, but they had a beach office. Holly knew them, she had worked with them before, got them involved. They came up with a rendering, again, a conceptual plan. We looked at that and said, wow, this is beautiful. We can take, Levy Park right now has a road that runs right through the middle of it. Pine Street literally bisects the park. Now, again, what park, what community says it's okay to have kids playing on one side of the road and have to cross to the other side of the road through a 40 mile an hour street to get from one side of the park to the other in the middle of the park? That's just not a safety thing. And so Chipa Smith, who's now the councilman for that district, is very keen working with the committee and saying, and actually he and I kind of ended up spearheading this along with Peaches and Brian Braddock, but said, okay, what do we need to do? And so we got them to redesign, taking the road out from running around the middle of the park and going around the park and then redesigning the whole interior of the park, putting in incredible new state of the art facilities and looking at the grant and said, all right, here are the different elements that the grant is looking for. How can we tailor our conceptual plan to meet all of those elements? Did that and then said, all right, price it out for us. It priced out at $18 million. One problem, it's a 50/50 match or it's a 100/100 match. So whatever we were asking for the feds, we had to come up with match. So if we're going to ask them for half of it, of nine million, we had to have nine million ourselves. Well, and we had a very short time period to get it. Fortunately, in the interim, conversations were held with Philip Lowe and with Jay Jordan and with Terry Alexander, saying, can you get some state funds that can go towards the East Palmetto corridor? Economic development improvement along that corridor.
Of which we all have an interest in.
Of which we all have an interest. So it's exactly what you're saying. They got 2.75 million. So the city received that 2.75 million thanks to Representative Lowe and Jordan and Alexander. And so we had that towards, and if I could get council to agree, which there was no problem with that, now that we had already acquired the property and now we already had torn that building down, but now we had the rest of the money that we had to get. And so went back to McLeod and said, here's the situation, here's where we are. Dr. Ally Brooks, God bless him, was, met with him and Ben Ziegler at the time, who was the chair of the McLeod Board at the time. And he said, Dr. Brooks, what do you want to do? And he said, let me take this. And met with Donna Ezgut and others. And they agreed to participate. Then we got Mindy Taylor with Duke Energy, she agreed to participate. And then we got Dr. Carter with Francis Marion, he agreed to participate in kind, saying, we can have our, help do designing, we can help do planting. So theirs is in kind. And so we got the county to come in, met with Al Bradley, Wayman Mumford, Tony Moore, and William Schofield. And they all, of course, William had been on city council when we first started and then he transitioned over and now he's with, of course, Chair of County Council. And so they, the county agreed, but we were three million short and we had no time left. And this is the miracle of it all. The miracle of it all is that you never know what you're going to get if you don't ask. And you never know what is going to touch people's heart if you don't give them an opportunity. There's a prominent businessman in town who, one of the people that is very close to him, I saw at the gym, you and I both, actually both have Jimmy Ard that we both work with over there. So I asked him, I said, do you think you could set up a meeting where I could go talk to this individual? And he said, sure. Turns out it was April 1 of 2022, okay? And we had gotten an extension, literally a stay of execution. We'd already submitted the plans, we'd already submitted all that, but we had to have the commitment letters for the funding, for the federal grant, because the timeline was passed. It had to get submitted to the state and the state had to send it up to the federal government. So I met with him, went Saturday morning, nine o'clock, meet with this gentleman and his people there. We spent an hour talking about Florence, we spent an hour talking about how it was in the past, how it is now, the beauty, where, what we hope to be. But then eventually it came down to said, well, why are you here? So I pulled out the plan and I showed him all the plans and everything and he flipped through it. And he said, well, this all looks really good. And he said, if you can pull this off, it would be spectacular. What are you looking for from me? And I said, well, here's the cost. And so I pulled out and went through that, all of that with him, showing him that the cost is 18 million. And I said, you know, we've got, different entities have given this, they've given that, they've committed to the other. I said, and I'm here just saying, is there anything you can do to help? And he said, well, you know, kind of where are you at? And I told him where we were at and that we were three million short and that anything he could do to offer assistance would be greatly appreciated. There was this long pause and then he said, well, put me down for three million.
The goodness of people.
I am still overwhelmed by that. I am still overwhelmed by that. And of course, my jaw dropped and I'm not one that's usually at a loss for words, but I was at a loss for words at that time. And I said.
George, I would have run out of there afraid I was going to goof it up, you know, if I stayed five or 10 more minutes.
I said, I don't know what to say. And the response was, well, you can start by saying thank you. Yeah, you're right. But he wants to remain anonymous on top of all that. And he said, I want to help people that, there's nothing they can do for me, but this is something I can do to make our community better. So.
That will impact the community for a generation and may become the impetus to do things like this in a lot of other places is what I'm hopeful for.
Exactly. So when you started this conversation with me, you talked about all these different entities. So we submitted it to the federal government. Well, guess what? We got the full $9 million grant from the federal government. We got more money committed to Florence, South Carolina in this grant than New York City got, than San Francisco got, than Washington DC got, than Atlanta got. We got, the only, there was one place in Kentucky that got 10 million, we are the next highest award recipient.
George, if you don't dream big, big things don't happen.
Exactly.
I mean, I hate to say that.
But you're exactly right.
Cliche, but if you don't dream big, you settle for small things forever.
And if we're going to elevate our community to where it can be and needs to be, this is a kickstart for it. Now, it's obviously not a panacea, but I'm so proud of those council members, and I keep mentioning Peaches, but she was, been right there visionary with me, right there every step of the way. When other members of council were like, hmm, yeah, you got an idea, but I'm not so sure.
That's a big ask and a lot of smaller towns don't, they're not comfortable making that big ask. I want to close with this, you're talking about Peaches a lot, and you made it known to me and others.
Yep.
That you are, I mean, the smart thing for politicians to do is stay in their own lane and not get involved in other folks' race.
But you chose.
I guess I'm not very smart. Well, I mean, I get it. I was not either. I stood on a five gallon barrel and endorsed someone and they won and I made enemies for the rest of my life, but so be it. But you're a member of a city council.
Yes.
And you feel strongly.
Very strongly.
That one candidate is better suited to lead Florence, the city of Florence, in the next four, eight, 10, 12, whatever, than the other.
Absolutely.
Why is that? Why are you such a supporter of Athonia Peaches Barnes?
You know, if you want to know what someone's going to do in the future, look what they did in the past. That's the best way. And Peaches comes from a background, she was a star basketball player at Wilson High School. She went on and played college basketball. And if you're going to, and I played college basketball, I mean, high school basketball, right?
Jimmy Tossios tells me a story about you guys scrimmaged a women's.
Yeah, there was a group of us and that's a little side thing, but yeah, we played, there was a group of buddies and we played, and during my twenties and thirties, I played a lot of basketball.
Pretty good at it, I understand.
Yeah, I was okay. But, but we had great teams and I had a lot of really talented people all around me. My job was defense and rebounding, you know? But you got to play as a team. Well, we got called by Tommy Johnson, who was, used to be a coach at West Florence and then he was a coach at Sockisty at the time. And Sockisty was hosting a basketball game with the touring women's Olympic team that had Ann Donovan, six foot nine, Ann Donovan and others that ended up winning the gold medal. They blitzed right through and won the gold medal in the Olympics and they wanted to play guys. They couldn't, they couldn't, they were the best of the best of the women.
Dawn Stanley does a lot of that with her team. They scrimmage guys.
Well, if you, if you're the best of the best of the women, playing other women is not going to get you where you want to be. So you want to play, you know, physically challenged by playing guys. Well, we had a really good basketball team. And so Tommy calls us up and to go down there. And so we get out there on the court and John Garrett's jumping center and John's 6'9" and he goes out there and he goes into the circle to jump and he looks and there's Ann Donovan looking him eye to eye. He had to back out and he's like, whoa, I'm not used to this. They were fantastic. They were incredible. They, sharp shooting like you've never seen before and ridiculously physical. I mean, and before we knew it, we were down like 15 points because, you know, we were like.
It's a bunch of girls.
It's a bunch of girls. And they're like, we had to call timeout, like guys, unless we start playing a game the way we know how to play, we're going to get blown out of here.
That's a good story. So you have scrimmaged the US Women's Olympic Basketball Team that won the gold medal.
Yes, and as it turned out in overtime, we beat them. And that's the only loss they had throughout the entire preparation or through. So, so one, my basketball claim to fame is I beat a girl's team.
Okay, but that's, that's still, that's still a win.
It's a win.
Okay, I didn't mean to sidetrack you, but let's get back to Peaches. I mean, you think she's clearly the choice.
I do, because she knows team and she knows how to build consensus and partnerships. And here's how you know that, by who is endorsing her. So you have four members of city council who have announced an endorsement of anybody. Okay, you've got seven members, two are running for office, right? Then there's, that leaves five. Of the five, four have announced an endorsement. Myself, Shaquille's McCall, Chipa Smith, and Brian Braddock. All four have come out and endorsed Peaches, okay? You also have county council and you have William Schofield, Al Bradley.
Republicans and Democrats.
Republicans and Kent Caudle, I believe, has done it as well as Tony Moore has done it. So you have four members of county council, all of whom have worked with the current mayor for the last four years. Why have none of them? Why has no current elected official anywhere, current elected official, come out and endorse the current mayor? But all of them have come out and endorsed Peaches. I think it speaks volumes about Peaches and about who she is and how she understands teamwork and working together and elevating and bringing the community together, that she can get white, black, Republican, Democrat, she can get everybody to work together. It speaks to that. And I think it also speaks to what's lacking with our current mayor. If that's putting it delicately.
You know, no stoplights is not known for its delicate, the delicate nature.
You look at the votes that have been had and how she voted no. Our current mayor has voted against these critical votes, these critical votes that have come up. And instead of saying, hey, listen, you know, you bring a great idea to the table, sure, let's go with it. You know, William Schofield brought an idea saying, we need better lighting for safety of our community. Everybody else voted for it, she voted against it. He brought the idea of saying, we need to improve infrastructure for our town. We need to get funds to do stormwater because anytime it rains, it floods. We got to do something about it. Teresa voted against it. As a result of that vote that we did, we were able to bond seven million. Because we had bonded seven million, we got 11 million extra dollars from the state matching grants. So that's $18 million that have gone, the work is being done right now. The work in the community is being done and it's because we voted yes, but she voted no. Okay? And I mentioned the park. There's 18 million and then you tad the other two million that came, you know, the million from the federal government that through the ARPA money as well as the matching money from McLeod and Bruce and Lee. So that's a total of $20 million, all grant money, $20 million all grant money that transformed whole East Florence and that corridor and transformed Levy Park and the community. And she voted no. She's the only one that voted no. So you see that happening time and time and time again. She voted against funding for abandoned homes, to tear down abandoned homes. So critical things. And listen, most of the stuff we vote on, it's a resolution in support of the Wilson High School winning the state championship or someone wants to come in and annexed into the city. There's a lot of just kind of routine run. Yeah, but on the, but there's a few things that are very critical. And when someone has positioned themselves on the outside on these critical issues time and time again. And then by contrast, you got someone like Peaches who's leading the Community Development Committee. She's led the charge to get $6 million set aside for community redevelopment to put and invest in housing and some of these very tough neighborhoods, addressing crime. We all know, if you want to attract business, you got to improve crime. You got to fix the crime problem in the city. Well, she's come forward, Peaches has come forward with a five-part plan to address crime. Our current mayor doesn't have a plan. I mean, you got to be forward thinking and I've known Peaches since I was on, working with downtown. She worked with me on downtown. She went walking around to business, because remember she was the operator of Oscar Salon, that was one of the very first businesses to come in on Evans Street in downtown. And she went door to door with me. So I saw firsthand 20 some odd years ago, before I So I saw firsthand 20 some odd years ago, before I ever got on council, before she ever got on council, who she is, her work ethic and what her focus is. So I saw that and I saw how she could bring people together. And you contrast that with the last four years of what we've seen and it's an easy choice. And that's why you see eight members of existing elected officials who are all supporting Peaches and zero supporting our current mayor. And I think it speaks volumes to who Peaches is and what you've seen out of our current mayor for the last four years. And she has said, she doesn't plan on changing. She's made, I mean, she has made it very clear, she has said that, I make no plans to change anything on the way I'm doing. Well, if you always do what you've always done, you'll always get what you always got.
Yep.
What is insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result? Well, we got to change something and the change needs to happen in the mayor's office. That's my position on it and I've said that to anybody who's asked.
Okay. George, I appreciate your time.
Kent, thank you.
Been a lot of fun.
Anytime, listen.
It's really been a lot of fun. Time gets away from us when we do this. I do want to, before we get out of here, thank our sponsors because they've had a lot to do with the, that's, ah, the success of the city and the county and the area in general. Francis Marion University, Carolina Bank, Mickey Fens, Victors, Marlboro, PD Electric Co-op, McCall Farms, Pepsi of Florence, PLC Commercial Real Estate and McLeod Health. I am unbelievably proud to call George a friend and I'm honored to have him as a guest on our podcast. And, and these sponsors are very much responsible for some of the successes the city and county have enjoyed. Thank you very much for joining us and until a later date.